Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council on August 24th. Before we get started this evening, we have a special presentation, so I would ask Mr. Mike Thonero to come forward with his special guest to make an introduction to us and to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to be before you this evening. This is somewhat delayed, but with me this evening is Sam Hurwitz. Due to some of the COVID restrictions, a number of people that we've not been allowed to have all at one time in one space, we were slightly delayed. But Sam is our new street superintendent, and when I say new, meaning he's been with us now for almost six months. Prior to being with us, he served as our assistant superintendent of streets, where now he oversees our street division, our traffic division, our buildings and grounds, our fleet management, our landscaping. He touches a little bit on our stormwater repair system as well. Sam has a large area of responsibility. As our previous assistant superintendent, he assisted the previous superintendent, but now he has that entire responsibility to him. Sam's previous role as assistant superintendent has led him to be the right candidate for the job for this next role. His previous experience in both private and public sector, as well as some not-for-profit experience as well, is really paying great dividends for the city. We're really thankful to have Sam on our team and really happy that he's accepted the role and doing so well as our new street superintendent. Sam's done a great job working with other division heads and other department heads, and his communication skills with those divisions and departments have been superb. So, wanted to take a moment, introduce -- I know some of you have met Sam along the way, but also take an opportunity to introduce Sam to the community as well, for those folks to introduce. And I do have an opportunity for Sam just to say a few words, and if you guys have any questions, we'd welcome those as well. So, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity. I love working with the city. I love the residents. I love everything about it. I look forward to continuing my career with the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Brenn?
Here.
Councilmember Doer?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. And at this time, I will turn it over to Councilmember Garcia.
Would you all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could please remain standing for one moment for a prayer. Heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Some move.
Second. I think I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Prescheduled presenters. First on the list is the vice president of the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, Mr. Ken Moran. Ken, did I pronounce that properly?
You did indeed.
Thank you.
Did indeed. Well, Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for having me. I am Ken Moran. As the mayor said, I'm the vice president for the Wetlands Association. I'm also one of the trustees. So, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about what we think is a pretty exciting project for the city and for the whole county, in fact. We're looking to collaborate with the city as we move forward, so if I can get this thing to work. On the right, you'll see what we call the Beaver Creek Wetland Corridor. It starts up at the top, a little place called Pearl's Fin. That's actually where the Beaver Creek originates from groundwater, and that's where the Beaver Creek starts, and it runs south through Fairborn and Beaver Creek and merges with the Little Beaver Creek down there toward the bottom, where you see the Creekside Reserve and into the Little Miami River. Well, this is really a pretty special place. About 30 years ago, if you were to look at all those little green swatches, which are wetlands and preserved areas, none of them would have been preserved. They were really subject to a lot of development and encroachment, and I think you all probably understand, you know, over the last 50 years, the wetlands in the United States, and here was no different, about 95% of the wetlands have gone away. So, over the last 30 years, I think all of us collaboratively have done a wonderful job protecting this treasure. We have about 2,200, 2,300 acres that are protected now, and we should all continue to celebrate that and pass that on to our children. But it occurs to us that a lot of this area actually isn't enjoyed by the residents of the city or the county. It's not accessible. I mean, it's a great thing that we preserved it, but we think it would be an even better thing if, in addition to preserving it, people could access it and enjoy it and better understand it. So, we've been collaborating to work on a vision to create what we would call a regional trail, because it really is going to benefit the entire region, that's focused on connecting all these disparate parts with a nice trail system that really dramatically expands people's access to this space. So, as we've been working on this vision, we have a set of goals that, you know, we've outlined. You know, the first and foremost is that we really want people to experience this space. It's there for them. It's something that they can enjoy and should enjoy. We want to make it safe, easy to access, so we're being very careful to think about how do people access this space? Where would they park? What are the trail systems that connect them into these areas that are quite a bit remote, if you will? And of course, as we go through detailed planning, really come up with something that's well-maintained, eco-friendly design, but provides folks a space whether they want to hike, do a nature hike, whether they just want to stroll or walk, or whether they want to, you know, do a recreational run or something like that. So, really, it's a multi-use kind of approach. I would point out that it's not a bike trail, so it's a natural space, and we're trying to keep it that way, so it won't be a paved bike path. Now, you know, the heart of our mission is to protect the ecosystem, so as we do this, we're going to continue to think about how do we improve that ecosystem. It really plays so many fundamental roles. I think most of us, when we think about wetlands, we think about protecting habitats for endangered species, and that's important. It does that. But it's fundamental to preventing major flood problems. You know, the wetlands soak up a lot of the flood runoff. It's huge to filtering water and feeding the underground aquifer, so it's fundamental to our drinking water. That's where we all get it, from that underground aquifer. And it's a big part of climate change. Actually, wetlands are a net carbon sink. They take carbon out of the atmosphere on the net. So, it's a lot of benefits, so we'll continue to pay attention to that as we go through this project. It's ambitious. We understand. This is a 15-mile-long corridor. You know, as we build boardwalks in wetlands, it's not cheap, but anything worth doing is worth doing well. But we've decided to break it up into phases, not only to make it more manageable, but also to open up each of these spaces a year at a time, so that, as you can see in Phase One, as we start down here by Rotary and Phillips Park and encompass that entire area that you see in the lower right, kind of goes all the way up to where Hunter's Ridge and Hunter's Point subdivisions are. We'd be able to open that up next summer, and I'll show you what some of those improvements look like. And then, again, each year, we tackle another phase of the project and seek to open up that next phase. This is our evolving plan for Phase One. We're in this planning, collaboration, partner buy-in phase. Clearly, we're raising funds at the same time for a lot of what's required here, but this gives you a sense of what we're trying to do in each phase. So, just to orient you, I think you're all familiar with Rotary down there. You see all the ball fields, and Phillips Park is to the right there, a little bit south and right. And of course, you can see Hunter's Ridge subdivision there in the upper left-hand corner. So, all these red trails and a little white-red trail on the far right is the new boardwalk. The whole idea is to, again, have this network of trails that easily connects the neighborhood, so you can see two new access points for Hunter's Ridge, easily connects to the existing park systems, both Phillips Park and Rotary, and allows folks a number of these different kinds of loops, where, again, if they're out for a shorter period of time, they can just do a loop. If they want to go out for a longer period of time, they can explore the entire space or connect up there at the top to what we're calling Phase Two, which will continue the trail system. Lots of great features in here, some additional bridges we'll have to build across the Beaver Creek, but several observation decks and observation towers, several information educational panels or, you know, two-foot-by-three-foot panels that are trailside that explain to folks what they're looking at, why it's important, all those kinds of things. So, again, this is just a snapshot of what we've been planning for Phase One, and this kind of gives you a feel for what we're trying to do with each of the spaces. Maybe these are obvious. I think the trail system, obviously, first and foremost, allow the residents to enjoy the space. But I think it's a big green space, and that's a value also. Some pretty prominent national studies have shown that when you give neighborhoods this kind of direct access to large, open green spaces like this, home values go up about 32%. So, it's going to -- that's not why we're doing it, but it clearly is going to benefit folks in that regard, too. And we think and hope that it's going to attract businesses and spur economic development at the same time. So, we think it's a win-win-win. We've been talking to a lot of folks. This is just a snapshot of the folks we are collaborating with here. You can see we've talked to Green County Parks and Trails and Director of Sanitary Engineering and the Director of their Planning and Coordinating Commission, and they're all very supportive of what we're trying to do. In the township, we've obviously talked to several of the folks that are involved there, and just last week, we're at the Board of Trustees there, and they passed a resolution of support. But we're not stopping there. You know, there are several land trusts that own easements, all those old green swatches I showed. They need to be part of this, and we're partnering with them. And we're talking heavily with all the neighborhoods, listening to any concerns they have, and, again, trying to collaborate with them. So, we've already received a letter of support for Hunter's Point, and we expect the same from the others. We've had very good, positive conversations. COVID-19's just slowed things down a little bit, so we're working through that. Well, so that's my overview. We're really excited about the project. We think it's going to do amazing things for folks, and we're looking for the council's support.
Well, Ken, we appreciate the presentation, and, you know, it's very aggressive, and if I hadn't been on some of your wetland areas and some of the boardwalks, I would say it might not be doable, but seeing what you all have done over the years is amazing, and we thank you a lot for everything you and your organization does. Comments? Anybody?
I'd like to echo the comments of Mayor. I mean, the work that you guys do is just fabulous. Councilmember Bales and I were talking about Pearl's Fin last week, and I went out there early winter, before everything was cut down, and we kind of explored and made our own trail and tried to find our way around. And my husband and I just went out there probably a month ago and were astounded at how quickly everything had progressed, how clear the trails were, and how easily accessible everything was. So, we've been to probably almost every one on that list, so we really do enjoy the wetlands, and I think this is going to be a tremendous project, because there's been even days where we'll go to one, and then we'll drive a half-mile up the road and go to the next one. So, these connecting trails are going to be fabulous. So, commend your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had several questions written down, but you covered a lot of them, and I just want to thank you for that. I think that the key to your success is going to be those partnerships that you've developed.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, I'm happy to see that you've talked to Green County Parks and, you know, the Beaver Creek Public Works and Parks Department, and the BW Greenway as well. I know that, right now, they're struggling with the issue of public access on a couple of their parcels, and so I think that you could serve as a, I don't know, a sounding board for them as they're trying to acquire some grant funding and so forth and running into those access requirements.
Right, right. Yeah, we heavily collaborate with them. We're helping together with their next round of Clean Ohio grant applications, and I just -- I mean, I work with Bob Jarrett very closely, but I just briefed their board two weeks ago. So, we're very collaborative, and we're on the verge of declaring this a joint partnership to make this happen, so.
Well, I think public access into those spaces is critical, and every single one I've been in has been fantastic, and I'm glad to see you continuing your mission.
Thank you.
Thank you for your good work. I echo the sentiments of Councilmembers Schwartz and Bales. Have you been in contact with the schools and thinking about how our elementary, high school, et cetera, age kids will gain access, things of that nature?
It's on the list. So, we have several things that we've talked to folks about. I think there -- you know, we today already have a number of educational programs that we sponsor in some of those different areas, like a monarch tagging program or a butterfly or a bird-watching program. So, we want to expand those, but I think there's also some opportunities like the high school cross-country team. This would be a great space for them to do training. So, we are thinking about it, and we're talking to folks, but to be fair, we're -- that's still on the list to really get after in a more thorough way.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you for everything you've done out there. We were out there walking about a week ago, and I was a little disappointed that I could only go out so far and had to turn around and come back, so extending it and connecting the whole thing will really be a nice feature. And it was really kind of interesting to me to see the -- all the animals that were out there in their natural habitat, you know, and we're actually visiting them, you know, being able to watch what they do. So, thank you so much for what you're doing, and we certainly are in favor of you following through with this plan.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I would definitely echo everything everyone has said, and actually, I -- this was the first group that I met with when I was elected back in 2018, and I know that this group was created to just preserve the nature that was growing around the creeks, and it's so wonderful to see what this group has grown to become. I know, talking with the group back then, this was a big goal of theirs, and just to see what you've done with it is phenomenal, and I can't wait to see what you do in the next four or five years. I think this is a really great project, and I think the residents are really going to benefit from this, so this is fantastic. So, thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carr, you got anything?
Ken, congratulations to you and the Wetlands Association. You've just been a pioneer in this area, recognized statewide for your efforts, and I think it's just going to be another big feather in the cap of the association and really help Beaver Creek. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the kind comments, but it really is a collaboration. I mean, we're just one voice that takes the entire village, the city, the township, Green County Parks and Trails, but we're fortunate that everyone is very collaborative, and I think that speaks well to everybody, so, but thank you.
You're one of the pieces of the puzzle that makes this community so great, and it, you know, we applaud our parks and rec, we applaud the county, but you're one big piece of that as well. We walked out there a couple times, twice a week, we do a Move With the Mayor event, and it's a walk somewhere. Well, we just -- this year, we got our eyes opened by walking through some of the wetland sites, and it's -- and it even opened my eyes more than -- I knew it was there, I just didn't realize how wonderful it was. So, thank you.
Well, we look forward to giving you more places to do those walks, Mayor.
All right. Well, if you hang around just a little while, we'll get to a resolution you might be interested in.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we also have a prescheduled presenter, Jill Bissinger. You have some presentations or information, awards you want to give.
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, a few weeks ago at a city council -- can you hear me okay? Okay. A few weeks ago at a city council meeting, you heard from Chief Evers as he recognized his employees for their outstanding performance and achievements over the past year, and at this time, we would like to honor some of the other employees throughout the city that have risen to new heights. So, at the city of Beaver Creek, our employees are our greatest asset, and we are delighted to honor their dedicated service and commitment to this community and its residents. It is our employees who demonstrate the ideal of working for a better future for people. The success of our city is a direct result of their efforts and dedication, and as such, it is a differentiating factor that sets us apart from other communities. So, on behalf of the city of Beaver Creek, it is a great -- it is with great pride and admiration that we highlight a number of our employees and their individual and collective contributions to the city's success. So, in planning and development, Randy Burkett was recently promoted to the position of Planning and Development Director. He participates on the Green County Airport Board of Zoning Appeals, serves on the Regional Bikeway Committee, and the Miami Valley Disaster Recovery, Repair, and Rebuild Task Force, and he represents the city on the Green County Census Complete Count Committee to increase awareness and motivate residents to respond to the 2020 census. Sandra Pereira was promoted to City Planner and has obtained the Association of State Flood Plane Manager certification. The association's mission is to promote education, policies, and activities that mitigate current and future losses, costs, and human suffering caused by flooding, and to protect the natural and beneficial functions of flood planes. Matthew Funk is our Code Enforcement Officer, and he holds the license of an Ohio Registered Sanitarian and earned the credential of a Registered Environmental Health Specialist and Registered Sanitarian through the National Environmental Health Association. Matt also serves on the Board of Trustees for the Ohio Code of Enforcement Officials Association, as well as the ZENIA Board of Zoning Appeals. In engineering, Nick Smith, who is our Assistant City Engineer, serves on the Technical Advisory Committee of the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, advising on technical issues and other delegated matters. And Mark Scholker was recently promoted to Construction Inspector just within the past year. In finance, Bill Cussera, Financial Administrative Services Director, is the current president of the OBC, the Ohio Benefits Cooperative, which is a not-for-profit partnership of government and public entities that have pooled their resources together to control employee benefit costs. And Mr. Cussera also serves as President of Miami Valley Risk Management, which is a member-driven risk management pool whose mission is to deliver high-quality risk management services to its member municipalities in a manner that provides long-term financial stability, minimizing risks, and also protecting mutual interests. Additionally, Teresa Hathaway was just promoted to Assistant Finance Director, I believe that was last year as well. And I hold two prestigious certifications in human resources. I recertified just recently for the Society of Human Resource Management, or SHRM. The certification designation is called Senior Certified Professional, and I accompany that with Senior Professional in Human Resources, which is the SPHR title. In public service, in addition to Sam Hurwitz being promoted to Superintendent of Public Service, 30 employees within public service have continued their core training requirements in order to be reclassified to the next higher position by completing 73 classes, with one individual shining above, and that was -- that is Steve Perdue, who was hired as Operator One last year, and he's surpassed all others by successfully fulfilling the requirements of 11 of the 16 training classes assigned. In Parks, Recreation, and Culture, Kim Farrell, our superintendent, is active on the Beaver Creek Historical Society Board, the Cultural Arts Connection, which promotes and provides cultural arts activities, the Fourth of July Committee, and the City of Beaver Creek Park Board. Kim has also been appointed to the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association Board of Directors. Zach Wyke, who is our Assistant Superintendent, obtained the Certified Parks and Recreation Professional designation, graduated from the Tree Commission Academy, completed the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce Green Leads Program, which provides professional and leadership opportunities, development opportunities. And he's also active on the Beaver Creek Tree Advisory and Beaver Creek Park Boards. Erin Harris, our Recreation Program Supervisor, serves on the Beaver Creek Youth Development Board, Fourth of July Committee, and Beaver Creek Park Board, in addition to her involvement with the Popcorn Festival. Erin also serves as the Region Three Chair for the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association. Tyler Barledge was hired as our Senior Center Supervisor this year. Tyler works closely with the Senior Advisory Board and has earned the Certified Parks and Recreation Professional, or CPRP, and Certified Personal Trainer, or CPT certifications. Josh Kirschbaum was promoted to Park Section Leader and has obtained the Certified Playground Safety Inspector designation. Brittany Belker was promoted to Operator One and has obtained the Ohio Commercial Pesticide Applicator License, as well as Joel Saraw, who is also an Operator One. He also obtained the Ohio Commercial Pesticide Applicator License. And one final commendation, the 2019 Employee of the Year was Chief Dennis Evers, and Chief Evers was honored at the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner Banquet. He joined the Beaver Creek Police Department in 1982 and advanced to the rank of Chief of Police in 2011. Serving in many roles during his tenure at the Beaver Creek Police Department, Chief Evers has received numerous awards for his service because of his personal commitment and dedication to this community. So, with tremendous thanks, we extend that to our valued staff for their dedication, their loyalty, their strong work ethic, substantial contributions and commitment, and the extra efforts exerted while continuing to fulfill their full-time duties and responsibilities is duly -- are duly noted, and that we appreciate -- it's appreciated by our fellow -- their fellow coworkers and the citizens of the city of Beaver Creek. They are active messengers, that the city of Beaver Creek is a truly great place to work, and they are true ambassadors for the city. So, thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you for sharing, because we know our employees are our special asset as well, and so it's nice to know those that take that little extra step once in a while. So, thank you. Comments, anybody? Thank you very much, Jill.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is ordinance resolutions and PUDs. First is Resolution 20-22.
This is a resolution directing the Green County Auditor to enter the cost of noxious weeds and grass cuttings to the tax duplicate for the properties described in Exhibit A.
Good evening, sir.
I realize that I always get the excellent and exciting resolutions to come before you.
You just can't stand my --
After all the fun stuff here, here we come about noxious weeds, but -- So, again, what we're going through today is an annual ritual So, again, what we're going through today is a annual ritual that we have every year where the code enforcement folks down in Planning and Development have gone through a process to eliminate high weeds, they call them noxious weeds, per the ORC. And I just wanted to go over quickly what that process is, because it's a little bit confusing. We don't jump from citing folks to, you know, putting a assessment on their tax lien. This is actually a process that we go through, and for some of you, it might be new. So, I just wanted to run through it real quick. Normally, if the staff notices high weeds, or we get a notification from neighbors, we go out there and make a inspection, and if it exceeds the ten inches per our ordinances, then we give notice to the owner to have that corrected within five days. If that doesn't happen, then we actually hire an outside contractor to come in and do that. We negotiate that every year, and place that out for RFP to get the, the best price for the contractors to do that for us. And then, we also charge a hundred-dollar administrative fee for this entire process. And again, I'm going through it very fast, but it is pretty labor-intensive, sending out notifications, posting the property, that type of thing. Okay. And there we go. So, again, now, if we've invoiced the property owner, we've told them about the charges, and at this point, he, they have decided that they're not going to pay the invoice, and our only recourse then, per our ordinances, to assess them on their tax duplicate. And again, that's authorized per Section 9716 of the city's Code of Ordinances. The county auditor also adds five percent, everybody's getting their hand into this, you can see, to get this up. And again, the notices we send out for the resident is, we tell them this entire process, so that they know that if they're not paying, it just gets progressively more costly for them. So, again, the major emphasis on this whole thing is really compliance. And again, once we've been through this entire process, we do have to submit it to the county auditor by September 11th. That's why it's on this particular meeting. Again, going back to the original goal of this process is really compliance. And you can see that overall, most of the seventy-six percent year-to-date, and sixty-eight percent, usually about seventy percent every year, actually get compliance. They react to the notice, and they take care of it. Again, the cost of, uh, per lot is, again, same ballpark, forty dollars with the contractor, that type of thing. And then, in 2016, we started a program where they abandoned foreclosure. So, again, if a, a property owner knows that their location's going to be in this foreclosure state, and it might go for a long time, they actually preregister, and that gives us a contact to send out to them to make sure that they get their property in compliance. It's a good program designed to, again, mitigate some of these claims that we might have in the future. And you can see, that's been pretty effective. We have like thirty, normally thirty properties a year that do that, that process. And again, it prevents us from identifying who the owner is, contacting them, that type of thing. It's a system that's set up that we send out the notice immediately, and they correct it, or they allow us to correct it, whichever they decide. So, again, you can see that the statistics are pretty consistent. And again, our number-one mission is just compliance. So, what you're seeing here is part of the assessment process, is really the last step. So, again, what you have before you is there are actually twenty parcels that are being assessed for sixty-six hundred dollars. And what this does is that it places on the tax duplicate when we get the money in, we put it in the general fund, that offsets the cost of getting the property back into compliance, and the cost of our administrative fees to go through this entire process. So, staff's recommending approval. The six thousand, six hundred dollars is about four thousand dollars less than the previous year. So, again, we're getting compliance. I think COVID had something to do with that. There was a lot of people staying home and taking care of their, you know, yards, and so, there was a lot less. But in that twenty parcels, there was probably about nine repeaters, which we see every year. They almost think it's cheaper for them to go through this process than to actually find somebody to cut it on their own. But, but that's what this resolution is doing, is in compliance with the state law, and getting it over to the county auditor to have it put on the tax lien for the upcoming year. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thanks, Bill. Anybody have any comments?
I have one question, Bill, and it's actually, I support this resolution. It's not really about that. Could you go back a couple slides? How does the city identi, one, one more. How does the city identify those foreclosure or vacant properties?
The program right now is set up that they'll contact us. They're, they're aware of the program out there. And normally, what they are, are like bank foreclosures.
Yeah.
And so, they know we have that ordinance in place, and when it goes into this foreclosure, they'll seek that out, and then contact Matt, and get into the system, fill out the form, and then he has it. And the bottom line is, is that now he has the exact contact information, who to get to, because again, when you have foreclosures like that, figuring out one who owns it and who's responsible for it is always the tough part. So, this registration program actually streamlined that and made it more efficient.
I, I think that's critical, because you're right. I think finding the people who can make the decisions on who can cut the grass, or who could fix the broken window, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Could be really challenging on those foreclosures. So, I just was wondering how he found out. So, that, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, imagine if you go in there, and you see that Chase Properties owns it. I mean, you have no idea who to contact, and there's usually, each bank has a different department called something completely different. And this way, it makes them register, and then we have that immediate contact. So, good point.
Thank you.
So, that ordinance we passed a couple years ago is being, is effective then. It is working well.
Right. So, again, you see of those thirty-seven, those probably all would have been the assessments going through the whole entire process, because again, us even trying to do the due diligence, if we can't contact anybody, all we legally have to do is post the property. And again, that usually goes nowhere either, unless some resident knows who that is, or who owns the property, to get ahold of them. So...
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much. All right, we have a resolution before us, and is there any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 20-22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-22. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is Resolution 20-23.
This is a resolution of support of the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association Trail Project and Grant Application.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I think we've all had the opportunity to read that.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 20-23, Beaver Creek Wetlands.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-23. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Ken, you have it, and I will sign it here shortly after this meeting. Thank you. All right, next is decision items. Board and Commission Appointments. The Beaver Creek Development Corporation. Mr. McHugh, are you going to address this a little bit?
Yes, I will, Mayor. You have before you the decision item, as you noted, and we'll need two motions, because under the code of regulations for the, for this, for the corporation, the Community Improvement Corporation, or Development Corporation, you know, by statute, we basically have created three positions, we already know, but then there are two additional positions. And one is someone with real estate experience or lending experience, and then the other one is a Beaver Creek citizen. So, you have two names before you. Mr. Morton is for real estate, and Mr. Doyle is the resident. So, if council will, if those two individuals are appointed, then at that point, we have a full board, because under the rules, it also provided that the council makes the initial appointments. So, that's what we're doing tonight, to fill the board out, so we can start the process.
This is just one more step in the process of creating this corporation.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We've created, yeah, we've, we've, yes, this is it. And then, also, I think, as you know, Mayor, and for council, that we're filing for 501(c)(3). That's, that's one of the other items we'll be handling. But that, that's a longer process, you know? Filing with IRS takes a little while.
Thank you. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to start?
I'd move to appoint Tyler Morton to Beaver Creek Development Corporation Board of Directors as the appointee with commercial real estate or lending experience.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Tyler Morton to the Beaver Creek Development Corporation Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. We have one more appointment to make.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Bob Doyle to the Beaver Creek Development Corporation Board of Directors as a Beaver Creek resident appointee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Bob Doyle to the Beaver Creek Development Corporation Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. It is now council time, and how about we start on the right today? Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate all of the employees who do such a great job for our community every day. They make our commu, our city shine, and I appreciate all, all of their work. Today, I'm wearing an orange tie in honor of the first day that my kids went back to Beaver Creek City Schools. They both had a fantastic first day, so thanks to Paul Otten and his entire staff, and, and Transportation picked their kids up on time, and I'm just really proud of that. And also, in honor of my son, Jack, who is a freshman this year, he made the golf team, and today was his first match. So, I am anxiously awaiting to see how, how he did. On a separate note, I've gotten a lot of people who have asked me about the upcoming income tax initiative. And so, the city manager put together a PowerPoint presentation, and I thought maybe I could walk through it a little bit, so that we could get people the correct information, where to go to find the facts, and how to get there, and so forth. It would be very beneficial. The best place to get information is on the city of Beaver Creek website, www.bevercreekohio.gov. If you scroll down just a little bit, there is a tab that says Proposed Income Tax. If you click on that link, it will take you to the income tax page. You can read all about the ordinance that we passed, a little bit of history behind it. There's a section on the right-hand side where you can click an email, and email the city directly if you have questions. And then, on the left-hand side of the screen are a massive amount of tabs, as you can see here, with links to such things as frequently asked questions. In that, in the frequently asked questions, you know, it describes very succinctly on who is going to be paying the tax, who gets the property tax reductions, et cetera. There's a lot of frequently asked questions that you can read through. You can quickly find out what kind of income is exempt from the tax, like military pay, and social security benefits, pension benefits, and many more. All of those on the, on the links on the side. You can explore our five-year capital improvement plan, that will give you a thorough understanding of all of the needed infrastructure projects. And, and you can see also what other communities' tax rates are. Because I think it's important to note that the city of Beaver Creek is certainly the largest municipality in the state of Ohio without an income tax. But you can really compare the other taxing jurisdictions around Beaver Creek to get an idea. I think one of the most important parts of the website is the income tax calculation estimator. On this estimator, you can plug in your own data. You can plug in your income, your spouse's income. You can go to the county website and find the exact property value of your property in Beaver Creek, and plug that in. And this calculator will automatically then calculate your tax savings or your cost associated with the income tax. There's a section that's called Immediate Tax Savings, which will show you, or cost, which will show you the impact immediately after the income tax is enacted. But there's also a section that's called Future Annual Estimated Savings or Cost, and that takes into account all of the other property tax levies that we've got, that in this, in this calculator, we're assuming no additional millage would be needed. So, I think that that's one place I would urge everyone to go to, to find out the information that directly affects their, their property and so forth. There are also a few other ways to stay informed about the income tax initiative, and of course, other city services. I would suggest everybody follow us on Facebook, Beaver Creek Ohio City Hall, and on Twitter, at Beaver Creek OHCH. Also, as always, you can watch us live, like you're doing now, I hope, on Beaver Creek Television at Spectrum Channel Five, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. And then, recently, everyone in the city should have received their issue of the In Touch magazine. This particular issue of In Touch dedicated several pages to talking about the income tax initiative. And so, it's always got a lot of good pertinent information about community services. And then, finally, there is the email that you can ask direct questions, incametax@beavercreekohio.gov. I promise that our amazing staff will get back to you quickly and with factual information. We are indeed at a critical junction in the history of Beaver Creek. We are at a, we are a big city. We've got big-city infrastructure issues, and we've got a level of expectation for service, I believe, that we want to maintain and grow. So, again, I've said it all along, I urge everyone to get the facts. You will determine the city's future in November. So, that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Durk?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Bales in terms of the schools. Our son had his first day today, and it was, went very well, very enjoyable. The drop-off line worked very, very well, which is always good, because that's one of the challenges of trying to get more cars, vans through the line with, with COVID. And so, that went very well. Our twin daughters, they're in the second week of preschool, so I'd like to thank all the preschool teachers, daycares, et cetera, that are doing a tremendous job during COVID-19. I'd like to thank Mike Thundero, Thundero and Bill Cussera for their work on the FEMA reimbursements that came into the city. I think that was absolutely tremendous news. I know there's an awful lot of work that's gone through, and there are many neighborhoods, especially in the north of Beaver Creek, that are very thankful for the work of the city in that time, from Spicer Heights, to the Garden View Neighborhood, and many others. And so, it's really tremendous news, and an awful lot of fine details that have gone into receiving the money so quickly. So, I'd like to say a big thank you there. That's all for me. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I know we say this pretty much at every single meeting, but we have a phenomenal staff. So, congratulations again to everybody we heard about tonight. They really make the city run well. And it was amazing to hear not only their role with the city, and all the things that they do on a daily basis for the city, but also their leadership roles and certification, certifications, and achievements outside of the city role that really bolster their credentials, and make them just such great candidates and people to work for here. They not only love the city, they're so well-qualified, over-qualified, and they really love the people here. So, it makes working with them so much, so enjoyable, and so much more exciting for us. So, thank you, and congratulations to everyone. And that's about it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of want to echo some of my fellow council members. Welcome back to the Beaver Creek students. And I kind of wanted to reiterate, in this trying time, I think that we all need to remember to exercise some patience. trying time, I think that we all need to remember to exercise some patience and some kindness. Everyone is kind of dealing with things internally that we are unfamiliar with. I can't imagine being a parent at this time, the unknowns of COVID, and sending your kids to school, and trying to make those tough decisions. So I ask that we exercise a little bit of kindness towards each other, as always. Other thing is, I saw Officer Barber was out keeping our school zones safe, so I wanted to commend him for that. Reminder that the school zones, there are speed, watch your speed in the school zones. We're all back. It's been a while since the schools have been in session, so just a friendly reminder before Officer Barber has to provide you a friendly reminder that comes with a fine. Again, echo the sentiments of Councilmember Garcia. We have an excellent staff. Our staff is just phenomenal. And I know that we probably could have sat here all night listening to their achievements and their accomplishments, and so I just really want to commend them. And it is such a pleasure working with the staff here. And then I just want to thank Councilmember Bales for the informational session on the income tax. As always, if anyone has any questions, you know how to reach us. Our emails are on the website. I believe our phone numbers are on the website. Don't hesitate to reach out.
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curran?
Thank you. I interrupt this broadcast to bring you an important announcement. Tomorrow, you can pick up your lunch at the Senior Citizen Center. There's going to be corn, ribs, and a variety of other foods. So I'd encourage all the folks in Beaver Creek to stop by. I think they start serving 11:30. You stop by, pay your money, then go around the side and pick up your meal. And it's really, really a great opportunity to support the Senior Citizen Center. Appreciate it. Want to also, of course, congratulate Councilmember Bales. I think that information set that he put together there was something that we want to encourage all the citizens in Beaver Creek. Take a look at it, get the information. We want people fully informed this November that they make a decision, and hopefully a decision in support of the tax. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I will add to that just a hair, and that is that I would suggest calling the Senior Center first if you haven't already made reservations.
Yeah, that's true.
Because that, a week or so ago, they were nearly sold out. So that's a good thing.
They were sold out.
So anyway, check first, please. Mayor's report, I really don't have a lot to add to add. This has been a very informational group conversation today. And, you know, we're all up here, and we serve our communities, and we appreciate our staff. And, you know, we just appreciate all the people in this community that make it such a great place. So I'm not going to add any detail to everybody's comment, but I agree with them all. So thank you all very much.
Mayor, forgive me, but you've forgotten Vice Mayor Adams.
Well, wouldn't be the first time. Normally, he's not that quiet. It must be the mask. Do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Several people already mentioned this about the Beaver Creek School starting today, and we pray that everything goes well for the teachers and the students as they struggle through this time. It's something they've never really had to deal with before. And a big shout-out to our teachers as well. They're just, they're trying to teach kids in new and different ways that they've never had to do before. And it's a learning experience for them, and so we wish them all luck. And I just hope that everybody does what they should be doing during that time. Also, welcome to Sam Hervitz, our new street superintendent. We wish him well in his new role. And I echo everyone else here on our city staff. The awards are just kind of icing on the cake because they do such a great job for our city. It's, and then all the different panels and boards and things that they participate in, and all the extra training and certifications that they get really help us develop a really strong city here. We've got a very strong group of people working for the city of Beaver Creek. Also, remind everybody the Census 2020, the deadline's coming up the end of September. I checked yesterday, and Beaver Creek has an 81% response, which is very good compared to what I've seen everywhere else. I think the state of Ohio is at 50%. So you're doing a good job, but we really need to get everybody out there and please be counted because it'll help us all in the end. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. How about city managers' report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were glad to hear more about the Wetlands Association, and that's definitely part of the city as far as an opportunity. But there's also other opportunities within the city to spend more times outside, so visit a few of the parks. And I'm just going to highlight a couple that have had recent changes. Head out to Dominic LaFino Park and check out the new floating dock. Okay, that's a very nice replacement that happened. Visit Gersparker Park to see the new playground equipment. Okay, so, you know, a lot of the playgrounds, as you go, you can't keep the old playground equipment once you, it's been outdated, and safety, and everything else. But so it's really good to see as we work through our parks to replace the playground equipment. So there's one to check out. Head out to Overlook Reserve, where the trail enhancements have been made. So now that you can actually, over there on Park Overlook, you can walk down through a trail now. So it's very, very nice. And be sure to check out the new one-mile tree identification trail that has been developed at Fox Run Park. This is also a lot of work, and work done by a Girl Scout as well, I believe. And we will be having a project there with parking, gravel parking, that will enable somewhere around eight, nine cars eventually to be able to be parked at Fox Run Park so that you can walk the trail. Very nice, was it about, I think it was 12, 12 identification trees that are posted with a plaque, and you can take your smartphone, and it has whatever you call that thing, where you can, it'll take you to the internet to show you what it is and more about the species of tree. So have a look at these. These are, a lot of time and effort's been put into these, and they're here for your enjoyment and education. Senior Transportation, this has been going on for a little while that we've been back, and we're being able to expand it a little bit. It was only for medical appointments there when we started back up, but now we're extending a little bit about grocery trips. You don't need to be a member of the Senior Center to use a transportation program, but there are fees, $2 one-way, $4 round trip. Non-essential shopping trips and hair appointments may be available. So you need to really call, you must reserve the trip. So please call within 48 hours, and the Senior Center number is 937-426-6166. I will say that the governor's order last week, what was that, Thursday, I believe, and we're still reviewing the information with, this is one that opens up Senior Centers again effective September 21st. But we have a lot of work to do with, because some of the requirements is the capacity of the county, the bed space, you know, in the hospital. There are some things that it's not really the city of Beaver Creek's control. We'll be working closely, though, with the Public Health Commissioner to make sure everything's lined up. But this will be an exciting, I know our staff at the Senior Center are just thrilled. They want the seniors back in and to help them as much as they can. So they're excited, but we have some work to do before even September 21st. And hopefully, the statistics stay good in Green County as a whole, and the hospital, utilization of beds and everything are good, so that we are permitted to open back up the Senior Center under, of course, strict guidelines. Also, what's happening is I-675, if you're on 675 at all, you're seeing a lot of barrels, what they call that for Ohio, the Ohio motto, or the, you know, the orange barrel. So there's a lot of single and double lane restrictions that will be in effect either direction between Montgomery County Line Road, so down there right by Wilmington Pike when you cross into Green County, and all the way to North Fairfield Road. That's where the repaving's going to happen. Now, we all admit, if we drive that stretch, it needs repaving. So I'm very glad it's being happened, but a little pain with the repaving here. Restrictions will also be in effect on overpasses and at interchanges within the construction zone for bridge repair. We have a couple we announced, one we announced last time. Entire project is scheduled to be completion of summer of 2022. So that much lane resurfacing and bridge repairs do take a while. Kemp Road was the bridge I was talking about, we announced, but it's a single lane restriction over 675 between Wagner Trace and Matthews Roads. Traffic is being maintained by temporary traffic signal, and the restrictions are anticipated to be in effect through late fall. So again, please, everyone, keep an eye out for traffic as you're traveling. Be patient. That will make it more enjoyable, although it's, you know, can be hectic if you're in a rush to get somewhere. But again, please slow down. And last thing, Tom Burton Memorial Golf Scramble is Friday, August 28th, at Beaver Creek Golf Club. So that's this coming Friday. The 22nd Annual Golf Scramble benefiting the city of Beaver Creek, city of Fairborn, all the Parks and Recreation Departments. Shotgun starts at 8:30 a.m., and there's still time to register for this event. So contact the Beaver Creek Parks, Recreation, and Culture at 937-427-5514, or register online. And you can go under Beaver Creek and find Parks and Rec, and there's a link there to that website. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is citizen input, citizen comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever? We just ask for a name and address, and to limit your comments to about three minutes.
My name is Al Cummings. I live at 2669 Greenside Drive in Beaver Creek. I'm going to have two subjects here. Hearing the presentation about the noxious weed problem. You know, I think we've also got a problem that council might want to look into, and that is repair potholes. We seem to have a problem from time to time. I think we have many out-of-state owners of commercial properties here now in the major traffic areas, and when they're out of sight, they're a little bit out of mind. And I think we've had some problems in the past, but I think that might put some teeth into it. So it might be something worth looking at. Second reason I'm here for...
Are you talking about off-site, not road potholes, but parking lot or parking lane?
Yes, yes, right. One in particular has been problematic, has been the lane that runs parallel to North Fairfield from Kemp Road to New Germany Traybine Road. Potholes that deep in certain times, certain years. I'm here also as a member of the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee, which is a committee that has been formed to inform the community about that provision that will be on the ballot, asking the citizens to approve that tax. Three things come to mind as I look at that, and I want to share with the citizens of the community tonight. And one is that 75% of the people who work here in Beaver Creek do not pay a tax in Beaver Creek. Their taxes go to the community from which they're from, whether it be Kettering, Centerville, or whatever. We are giving away, or we letting slide away from here, based on the estimates for 2019, 2020, $10 million a year. That's an enormous amount of money that we could be keeping here. The second thing, the levies that are going to ballot periodically, there's three that are constantly, you know, rotate, the Parks and Recreation Levy, this Roads Levy, and the Fire Department, or the Police Department Levy. Those will become an extinct entity at some point in time if we pass that. And then, finally, who's the guy, who was the Governor Perry from Texas who couldn't remember the third point?
What's your point, Governor?
It'll come to me, it'll come to me, but it's another very important point, you know. I have to look at you. I'm very timid, so I was very intimidated by your thing. But anyways, I want you to know that we have seven other people here from our committee tonight, and I don't know if any of them want to speak. Our esteemed chair is out talking to another group tonight, but if anybody wants to say something, they can.
We'll give them all the opportunity to come up, and maybe one of those will know the third point.
They'll probably come up with my third point.
All right. Please, come forward. Give a name and address, please.
Dr. Mark Walsh, 434 Rems Gate Drive in Beaver Creek. Thank you, Mayor and council members, and again, thank you for your service to the community and all the slings and arrows that you suffer. But I'm here also as part of the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee, and our goal is to educate the public. We're not trying to put a spin on this issue. We really just want them to get the facts. We feel that's one of the reasons this is not passed in the past. People don't understand it. They don't understand that if they work in a city where they pay an income tax already, that that money does not come back to us. They also don't understand that we don't get any of that money. I've heard many people say, well, we get some of that back, don't we? We don't get any of it. Also, the people from those cities who work here are taxed by those same cities, like Kettering, Dayton, and Centerville, and the money goes back there. So we're losing, as Al said, $10 million or more, actually, per year. For those people who are in, 70% of people in the city would not pay this tax, but would get a reduction in their city property tax, and would hopefully see an improvement in their services. The remaining people, the other 30%, who would pay the tax, would not necessarily pay a full 1% because they'd be getting a property tax reduction at the same time. So their effective tax rate may be as low as zero, but at most, 1%. We, as a committee, have been having meetings, actually, Brian Jarvis, as you know, is really most of the committee, but Brian has been holding informational meetings every two weeks because of meeting requirements, limiting number of people. He's doing this on Zoom. And if people want to go to a meeting, they're a little more free-flowing, and you can learn more if you email Brian at B, as in Bravo, V as in Victor, jarvis@yahoo.com. That's BVJarvis@yahoo.com. He'll put you on the list and send you a link to the meeting. You can come in, ask him questions, et cetera. Also, if you want to help with the committee, we're actually a small group, and we need help raising money, placing signs, passing out brochures. You can also mention that to Brian, and he can tell you how to join. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see another walking forward here.
My name is Sundar Vardla. I live in Spicer Height area. And I've got a couple of questions. One is, of course, parks. I really like parks, and lately, I have been going every park possible, you know, those narrow reserve along Miami, or the Overlook Reserve behind my, just next door, my neighborhood, and even Angel Park that I bike, you know, every other day. And of course, I play tennis and everything, so I'm kind of outdoor. So encourage city to spend, invest money in the parks, its quality of life, whether the Wetland Association or anything. It's really beautiful. This brings people out and enjoy, and it enhances the image of the city. Second, again, I'm part of this volunteer group of income tax, and I just got involved when that Chamber Commerce briefing by Mr. Jarvis, and it really got my attention that we have all the benefit that city can bring, and we are wasting that revenue. So, and so I'm part of that and excited, and I'm really, really sure this will pass. Only thing is that momentum, we had to create the momentum, awareness, and messaging, and positivity, and media, all those things. And there are people, I got on nextdoor.com in my area, Spicer Height, and I got bombarded with, you know, messages. So 90, 89% positive, there are 10, 20% people you will never be able to pursue, no matter what you do. That's absolute, that money right there. But so, but emphasis on the people who are senior, emphasis on the people who work here but don't live here, and that will bring the majority, and then those people naysayer, you know, just might as well forget. So, anything city can do, I was thinking about, like you said, you have a telephone number if you have any question. So if there's any tape recording, kind of... So if there's any tape recording kind of thing that, you know, people have any question, or you just kind of spell out, you know, what is all 1%, income tax will do and benefit, and 3.4 mil will not be exercised, those kind of question, that means a person don't need to talk to the person, it's already there, you know, just boom, you know, if that's possible, you know. So thank you so much, and again, it's a good move, and again, I commend you all passing the resolution.
Thank you very much. I see another walking this way.
Good evening, Your Honor, Walter Chen from Beaver Creek, 328 Cottonwood Place in Beaver Creek. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Bales for giving that very detailed information on the earned income tax. Okay, this is a win-win situation for the city as well as for its citizens. First of all, I also want to say to the elected officials here that you've done an outstanding job in terms of leading this initiative, first of all, by passing the ordinance as well as the resolution. Thank you very much for that. Number two, I do want to iterate that there are four key facts that, that the citizens within Beaver Creek need to adhere to. Instead of listening to some of this hogwash that, that's out there, that people are not in tune to the facts. So therefore, they must educate themselves by going to the website and asking questions and/or contacting the council members or going to the website and asking those respective questions. So what are the four key facts? Number one, to reduce the city property taxes for all property owners. So what's, what's the results of that? Well, what'll happen is, is that 3.4 mil street levy will actually expire in 2021 as the new income tax will go in effect in calendar year of 2022. The second key fact is that all persons that are working in our city will pay their fair share of the income tax, okay? Well, they utilize our services, they utilize the operations as well as all the services that are available to them when they don't live here in the city of Beaver Creek, but they utilize all our amenities, okay? So where we, and who are we trying to target? We're trying to target those people that work and are non-residents here in Beaver Creek. So, and I, I personally feel that that is being very, very fair. And doing this, as, as you heard earlier, is going to generate approximately $10 million. And that $10 million will address all the infrastructure and some of the operations and maintenance areas that are, that are so sorely needed. Item number three, the other fact is that retirement income will not be targeted, okay? They are exempt. And you heard some of those areas that we mentioned here earlier tonight. And fourth, the fact is that residents paying income taxes to other cities will receive up to that 1% credit, okay? That's a win-win for the city, for those people that live in other areas, that work and play and utilize our services here in the city of Beaver Creek. So if I could just have a few more minutes, I'll take the three minutes from my wife, okay?
Well, just to be on the safe side, would your wife please come forward and donate three minutes to your husband?
Thank you, Your Honor.
We'll just try to, try to keep this a little bit, little bit standard.
Make it official, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, state my name.
Please.
Denise Chen, 328 Cottonwood Place, Beaver Creek, Ohio, and I yield my time to my husband, Walter.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, to make it, to make it official. The other thing is I would like to urge the citizens of Beaver Creek to attend city council, okay, to learn more, to see firsthand what is going on. I want to thank trustee Curran for attending the BFF Committee meetings, and also, it's also opened every other week, currently at the Laffino Senior Center. So, and we're planning to have another meeting at 1:30, again, led by the leadership of former mayor and trustee, Mr. Jarvis. So, so what are we doing specifically for the committee? We're, Denise and I, we're putting together a HOA point of contact list in order to target the presidents to help disseminate some of our trifolds, which will be ready within a couple of weeks, okay? And most of the committee members have been working diligently to wordsmith that, to make it politically correct, to make sure that we don't offend anyone, whether it's positive or negative. Number two, thank you, Mr. Bales, for providing your input for the source of signs, okay? As of this evening, I was able to, to draft up about 10 different signs for our committee to take a look at and to provide input so that we can go ahead and move forward with the minimum budget that we have, that, that Mr. Cummings is managing for us in order to procure the signage around the city parameters to identify those signs in specific approved locations in our districts 1, 2, and 3. Other than that, we are, we are kind of like your brain trust in terms of trying to put everything together and also to support the initiative as we urge the voters to go to the ballots and vote and do their due diligence as citizens for the city of Beaver Creek. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And thanks to your wife for donating her time.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else, please come forward.
Thank you. Well, every time I come, I'm, can you hear me through this, or do I need to take it off?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Mary Brayley, 1399 Town Hall Road, Beaver Creek, and Mr. Mayor and Council. The word peace has its derivation in the term balance. We want a peaceful community, and I think there are a couple of areas that are getting left out of the discussion here. One of those is that a part of the intent of creating a system combining income tax with the property tax is to bring balance to our revenue sources. Just like you don't put all of your money in one investment, we shouldn't depend for all of our sources for our city on one major piece of revenue, which is what this addresses by bringing a balance between the income tax that will provide a portion of it and the leftover property taxes and other things that you get. The other balance that we need to bring a peaceful and a community for Beaver Creek is just that. We're a community, and a community needs a balance of demographics. There are those in our area, especially of the old timers, who feel like we're being pushed out, that a lot of the property tax especially addresses that, that we're being taxed out of our properties. And I feel, as I think any, any investigations or analysis would say, that the older people, the stable older people who've been here for 40 years are a very important ingredient to that balance in a community. We bring something that the younger wage earners don't bring. They bring something that we no longer have to give to the community, and that creates community. They give what we can't, and we give what we can't, what they can't. So I think that it behooves those who are reticent and are a little bit complaining about that it may cost them $1,000, can you figure what 1%, what salary they're making? That it may, that it may cost them $1,000 or even $2,000, this 1% tax? What is it costing percentage-wise of our senior citizens on fixed incomes when you consider the trade-off there? Let's consider our senior citizens as well as the tax earners in this, and bring more balance, which brings a peaceful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else tonight? Good evening, Carol.
Good evening. Carol Graff, 1442 Devoe Drive. I am with Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee, and I have, will second whatever they've said, but actually, I'm here because I'm also on the Beaver Creek Wetlands Committee, getting this new project along, and have been in with the Wetlands Committee since its inception in 1988. What I have noticed, though, and the city could use, help us with this in a very easy manner. The Wetlands Committee has been trying to get rid of alien species in the wetlands itself, and one of the worst ones is purple loose stripe. If you drive along Kemp Road opposite Station 63, there is purple loose stripe that is beautiful in the ditch. I would ask if the city could help eliminate that from the ditch, at least by cutting it down and seeing what else you can do, but it's in full bloom as of this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, interesting.
Okay, I belong to Indian community, and they are a pretty big part of the city. I promise you, I'm gonna bring them 100% to say yes.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and a second to adjourn. We are, oh, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.